Until you do the YouTube and this is live, that's when it's recording. So I'm not there?
Not during our.
Yeah, and then make me a co-host. You, you always will be the, the host. There you go.
Alright.
Okay.
I hereby call the Joint School Collaboration Subcommittee Meeting to order. Chairperson, Recording Secretary, can you please conduct the roll call, please?
Yes. Committee Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Committee Member Vasquez?
Present.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
Present.
Chair Bustos?
Present.
Absence Committee Member Lopez. Record show you have four members, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Recording Secretary. Mr. Armandares, can you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes.
Ready, begin. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
Thank you. Next, we have the public comment section. This is the time for the subcommittee to receive comments from the public. Recording Secretary, do we have any public speakers today?
Chair, at the moment, we don't have any speakers.
Thank you. With that, let's go ahead and move on to the consent calendar, items one and two. Subcommittee members, are there any items that you wish to pull from the consent calendar?
Nope.
Seeing none, let's go ahead and conduct roll. Madam Secretary, can you please conduct roll?
Yes. Committee Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Committee Member Vasquez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
Present.
Chair Bustos?
Yes.
That's four A's. It's your niece. Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, we will move on to the informational items section of the agenda, items three to five. Let's go ahead and start with item number three, music in the park.
Is that yours?
That's mine.
Go ahead.
I'll, I'll go ahead and start. Um, I was reflecting back, you know, up until 2007, we used to have an event that was a joint event between the school district and the city of Santa Ana. It was music in the park. And, and the last time that it was held, it was over at Memorial Park, where basically we opened it up, Memorial Park, for children, for groups, youth groups, children groups, uh, to come and perform. And I think that, uh, we have a lot of talent within our, within, within our city. You know, the children that are at our schools are also your constituents, also live in, in, in your city. Um, and we're equally responsible for those kids, and I think that we need to, um, in essence, we need to brag about our kids. You know, I, I, I was over in Washington DC where the, where the students from Willard, uh, Willard intermediate, the jazz band was invited to play at the, at the Kennedy Center. Uh, we have our, our visual and performing arts students, you know, performing everywhere in Southern California and California. And I think that we have a lot of talent here, and I think that we need to showcase our talent. I think that, that's something like, uh, music in the park. I'm, I'm thinking, even though the agenda items, music in the park, I'm thinking more of, of being inclusive of visual and performing arts, not just music, but also spoken word and other things like that. I mean, we did it in the past, we worked together, we collaborated, I, I think that, that we should consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes. I love the idea, and I, I hope that more of our city events include, and they do include, uh, performances by our students, but to do now, music at the park, I do appreciate you, Hawk, for, uh, having a conversation with me, but not to have it opening up for a band, have the car mariachi open up, at Jerome and the jazz, uh, open up in other places. And, uh, I know I, I ran many events for, uh, at Central, and the thing that got families out there was the performers themselves. So Dia del Niño, we had performers from all kinds of balearic choricos and all kinds of music groups. And that's how we filled up an event, and it's, and it, that's how it became a positive. And Noche de Altarés is the Ultra Makers, and their 20 family members. That's how we started to fill that space up until it just became as big as it did. But, um, to have people participate within it and have community, even more community participate, we have more people coming out. So yeah, and, and it's great to hear our kids do their thing.
Thank you. Thank you, Subcommittee Member Vasquez. Vice Chair Hernandez?
Thank you, Chairperson Bustos. I'm supportive of music in the park. Um, Parks and Rec does have a program right now in our city where we visit, um, Jerome Park. We've visited, um, Birch Park. Um, I know there's a couple that I may be missing, but we presently, over the last two years, have done concerts in the park. What I would like to see from the city of San Ana is to collaborate with the school district. And let's say if we're having an event at Jerome Park, we should, we should collaborate with Carr. We should collaborate with Valley. Um, if we have an event at, let's say, um, Centennial Park, we should collaborate with Godinez, incorporate some of those students that maybe live adjacent to the park. Um, I would be, I would also like to implore the San An Unified School Board, uh, to include mariachi program, to be part of concerts in the park. Um, I know we have some really good speech and debate students as well. Maybe it's, it's time to incorporate them as well as part of that concerts in the park. And, um, maybe this is something that the city can collaborate on, where when we're designating concerts in the park, we're doing it in conjunction with the school board, right? And so that way, there's a collaborative here. Um, there's a collaboration, maybe there's an increase, um, in, in students wanting to see, uh, more, you know, visual performer, uh, performance. Uh, maybe it's having some dance students involved as well. So I would, would like to see the city support, um, collaboration between the school board, um, and our schools, all throughout the city for music in the park. And I think a good way for us to do that is to have our Parks and Recreation Department share a roster and a lineup of the events that we're already having, and then finding ways for us to insert some of the amenities that we have in our school board. Those will be my final comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hernandez. I, I do have some comments. I am supportive of this. I really do, would like to see some more collaboration between the city and between the districts, visual and performing arts programs. Um, I think that there is a lot of talent, there's a lot of skill with our youth. Um, but I also want us to get to a point where we can start, um, actually begin that collaboration. And so I know that at the last Subcommittee meeting, we had made a, a request, um, for staff to, um, or for, request for staff to have SAUSD students perform at all city, city events. And so I don't know if that conversation hasn't been had yet between the district and the city. Um, I guess I'll, I'll turn to our folks representing the, the district and the city. Has that conversation happened?
Yes, it has. And like I said, like Councilmember Hernandez was, uh, talking about our concerts and parks, they always do start off with a, a school district performance. And every concert has a different theme and different, you know, setting, so we do do that. As far as all of our city events, we do get the, um, school board, I mean, the school board, the school kids involved in what we do, whether it be fiestas, or it be, you know, July 4th, you know, our schools are very well represented in what we do, and we continue to reach out to them to see what we can do. Um, going to about your thing about the concert or the, um, you know, bit that you staff here, we currently are in budget season, and that's something our council could recommend at the dais to add as a special citywide event to work with the school board. You know, because as we do have made our suggestions, they do have the ability to do that as well.
Thank you. I think one, one request that I'll make, um, is that, um, we, the Subcommittee receives, um, a calendar of list of events of, um, or city events, or yeah, city events where our students are going to be performing, or where there's that collaboration happening. I think it's important for the Subcommittee to know and, and just, again, keep track of that progress and that continued collaboration. But I think, um, also for us to see the opportunities where there are, there maybe there are potential opportunities for us to collaborate, and we just haven't. And so, um, I guess I'll make a, a motion that by, you know, the next Subcommittee meeting, we at least begin seeing some, a, a list of calendar of events where that collaboration has happened in the past, and, and I guess dates that are forthcoming, um, where that collaboration will happen. So again, I think that, that will be some kind of collaboration between the city, but also the school district. And so I know I'm also looking at Superintendent Armandares, um, and hoping that we can support as well to see, and I, I know that it's also a lot of, um, organizing on, um, the schools and, and organizing students to, to do that. So I know it might take some time, but I guess just a, a very, I guess by the next meeting, a very simple list is okay, um, but that'd be helpful.
I do have that list already for you. Um, so July 18th, we are at Thornton Park. July 25th, we are at Portola Park. Um, August 1st, we are at Jerome Park, and August 8th, we're at Memorial Park.
And that's for, that's for the.
That is for, that is for the concert and the parks.
Gotcha.
Now, if we're looking for a bigger event like music in the parks, that's something that they can bring up to the dais for us to work on as our, one of our special events.
Any other comments from Subcommittee members on this item?
Yeah, I'll second your motion.
Um, any other comments before we call the roll? Okay, Recording Secretary, can you please conduct the roll?
Yes. Committee Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Committee Member Vasquez? Vice Chair Hernandez?
Yes.
Chair Bustos?
Yes.
Okay, four A's, your niece. Motion carries.
Thank you. With that, let's go ahead and move on to item number four, dual-use parks and parking. Uh, who was the Subcommittee member that put this item on the agenda?
I think it'll always be me.
Alright, there we go. Thank you. Subcommittee Member Vasquez.
So I'm looking for dual use and hopefully to help with some of our parking. If we could have starting those conversations, and maybe, uh, you start, use one school in a few parking spaces with permit parking, and if we could start doing that and, uh, to see how it works, that we could start to implement, um, a program that would allow 10 to 20 cars park on school grounds, and, and we could go from there and, and test it out and see how we do. Uh, for the parks, a dual use, I, I, I had, I've been in conversations with Supervisor Sarmiento, which would support the idea and support with the funds, resources to, uh, bring a dual use to a park. And I was really looking for, uh, a neighborhood and with necessity, and I'm thinking on Lowell and Pio Pico. So those two schools where they're highly impacted, where families are living 10, 12 in an apartment, and they don't want to be inside, and there's nowhere to go outside, and there's nowhere to be. So we provide them a park, we provide them a safe place and an atmosphere. So Lowell, Pio Pico, if not, uh, I would appreciate to look into Franklin Elementary, Martin Elementary, or Headinger Elementary, uh, and, and those orders. So Lower Pio Pico, Franklin, Headinger, and Martin Elementary. And, uh, whatever is more feasible, because, uh, some of them already do have fences cutting off the, the school from the playground, that, that, that creates for safety for the spaces. So, uh, whatever would be easier, but also for the city staff to sit with the district and Supervisor Sarmiento to start working on the logistics that push, uh, for, um, that action to happen.
Great. Thank you, Subcommittee Member Vasquez. Any other comments?
Yes. Thank you, Chairperson Bustos. I'm supportive of dual-use parks. Um, Parks and Rec does have a program right now in our city where we visit, um, Jerome Park. We've visited, um, Birch Park. Um, I know there's a couple that I may be missing, but we presently, over the last two years, have done concerts in the park. What I would like to see from the city of San Ana is to collaborate with the school district. And let's say if we're having an event at Jerome Park, we should, we should collaborate with Carr. We should collaborate with Valley. Um, if we have an event at, let's say, um, Centennial Park, we should collaborate with Godinez, incorporate some of those students that maybe live adjacent to the park. Um, I would be, I would also like to implore the San An Unified School Board, uh, to include mariachi program, to be part of concerts in the park. Um, I know we have some really good speech and debate students as well. Maybe it's, it's time to incorporate them as well as part of that concerts in the park. And, um, maybe this is something that the city can collaborate on, where when we're designating concerts in the park, we're doing it in conjunction with the school board, right? And so that way, there's a collaborative here. Um, there's a collaboration, maybe there's an increase, um, in, in students wanting to see, uh, more, you know, visual performer, uh, performance. Uh, maybe it's having some dance students involved as well. So I would, would like to see the city support, um, collaboration between the school board, um, and our schools all throughout the city for music in the park. And I think a good way for us to do that is to have our Parks and Recreation Department share a roster and a lineup of the events that we're already having, and then finding ways for us to insert some of the amenities that we have in our school board. Those will be my final comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hernandez. I, I do have some comments. I am supportive of this. I really do, would like to see some more collaboration between the city and between the districts, um, visual and performing arts programs. Um, I think that there is a lot of talent, there's a lot of skill with our youth. Um, but I also want us to get to a point where we can start, um, actually begin that collaboration. And so I know that at the last Subcommittee meeting, we had made a, a request, um, for staff to, um, or for, request for staff to have SAUSD students perform at all city, city events. And so I don't know if that conversation hasn't been had yet between the district and the city. Um, I guess I'll, I'll turn to our folks representing the, the district and the city. Has that conversation happened?
Yes, it has. And like I said, like, uh, Councilmember Hernandez was, uh, talking about our concerts and parks, they always do start off with a, a school district performance. And every concert has a different theme and different, you know, setting, so we do do that. As far as all of our city events, we do get the, um, school board, I mean, the school board, the school kids involved in what we do, whether it be fiestas, or it be, you know, July 4th, you know, our schools are very well represented in what we do, and we continue to reach out to them to see what we can do. Um, going to about your thing about the concert or the, um, you know, bit that you staff here, we currently are in budget season, and that's something our council could recommend at the dais to add as a special citywide event to work with the school board. You know, because as we do have made our suggestions, they do have the ability to do that as well.
Thank you. I think one, one request that I'll make, um, is that, um, we, the Subcommittee receives, um, a calendar of list of events of, um, or city events, or yeah, city events where our students are going to be performing, or where there's that collaboration happening. I think it's important for the Subcommittee to, to know and, and, and just, again, keep track of that progress and that continued collaboration. But I think, um, also for us to see the opportunities where there are, there maybe there are potential opportunities for us to collaborate, and we just haven't. And so, um, I guess I'll make a, a motion that by, you know, the next Subcommittee meeting, we at least begin seeing some, a, a list of calendar of events where that collaboration has happened in the past, and, and I guess dates that are forthcoming, um, where that collaboration will happen. So again, I think that, that will be some kind of collaboration between the city, but also the school district. And so I know, I'm also looking at Superintendent, uh, Superintendent Armandares, um, and, and hoping that we can support as well to see. And I, I know that it's also a lot of, um, organizing on, um, the schools and, and organizing students to, to do that. So I know it might take some time, but I guess just, uh, a very, I guess by the next meeting, a very simple list is okay, um, but that'd be helpful.
I do have that list already for you. Um, so July 18th, we are at Thornton Park. July 25th, we are at Portola Park. Um, August 1st, we are at Jerome Park, and August 8th, we're at Memorial Park.
And that's for, that's for the.
That is for, that is for the concert and the parks.
Gotcha.
Now, if we're looking for a bigger event like music in the parks, that's something that they can bring up to the dais for us to work on as our, one of our special events.
Any other comments from Subcommittee members on this item?
Yeah, I'll second your motion.
Um, any other comments before we call the roll? Okay, Recording Secretary, can you please conduct the roll?
Yes. Committee Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Committee Member Vasquez? Vice Chair Hernandez?
Yes.
Chair Bustos?
Yes.
Okay, four A's, your niece. Motion carries.
Thank you. With that, let's go ahead and move on to item number four, dual-use parks and parking. Uh, who was the Subcommittee member that put this item on the agenda?
I think it'll always be me.
Alright, there we go. Thank you. Subcommittee Member Vasquez.
So I'm looking for dual use and hopefully to help with some of our parking. If we could have starting those conversations, and maybe, uh, you start, use one school in a few parking spaces with permit parking, and if we could start doing that and, uh, to see how it works, that we could start to implement, um, a program that would allow 10 to 20 cars park on school grounds, and, and we could go from there and, and test it out and see how we do. Uh, for the parks, a dual use, I, I, I had, I've been in conversations with Supervisor Sarmiento, which would support the idea and support with the funds, resources to, uh, bring a dual use to a park. And I was really looking for, uh, uh, a neighborhood and with necessity, and I'm thinking on Lowell and Pio Pico. So those two schools where they're highly impacted, where families are living 10, 12 in an apartment, and they don't want to be inside, and there's nowhere to go outside, and there's nowhere to be. So we provide them a park, we provide them a safe place and an atmosphere. So Lowell, Pio Pico, if not, uh, I would appreciate to look into Franklin Elementary, Martin Elementary, or Headinger Elementary, uh, and, and those orders. So Lower Pio Pico, Franklin, Headinger, and Martin Elementary. And, uh, whatever is more feasible, because, uh, some of them already do have fences cutting off the, the school from the playground, that, that, that creates for safety for the spaces. So, uh, whatever would be easier, but also for the city staff to sit with the district and Supervisor Sarmiento to start working on the logistics that push, uh, for, um, that action to happen.
Great. Thank you, Subcommittee Member Vasquez. Any other comments?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairperson Bustos. Um, I too am supportive of dual-use parks and parking for school board, uh, for our school sites as well as our city employees. So for instance, an example, um, is we have, I know, parking shortage in Artisia Pilar for some of our staff at Fremont Elementary. And we also have ample park space for students to utilize, um, during school hours at Fremont Elementary. I think that'll improve the quality of service from both the school board, um, and for residents of the city. I'm supportive of, um, Councilmember Vasquez's request to increase access to park space in the form of doing these, uh, dual-use parks and parking agreements, um, for Pio Pico, Headinger, Franklin, and I believe there is one more school.
Lowell?
Lowell, yes, I'm supportive of those requests. Um, I would also like to see us, um, look into addressing the lack of park space in neighborhoods like, uh, Washington Square. We have Wilson Elementary. They have beautiful park space. Um, I remember as a kid, the park space was available to residents in Washington Square. It no longer is. Um, so perhaps it's, it's time that we visit, um, you know, that, that school site. And similar to what we've done with Willard, find a pathway forward for us to, to create an agreement that works for the students and for the residents. Um, I also support seeing the Sullivan community. They don't have any park space, they don't have a community center, um, but we do have Lincoln Elementary in the Sullivan community. Um, there's a lot of families, um, who need a space to meet. Um, they need a, a safe place to bring their kids to play in a park. Um, I think the solution could be us collaborating with Lincoln Elementary. Um, and then lastly, I brought up Fremont Elementary, because I know that there are problems that persist for staff related to parking at Fremont. Um, I think it's time that we, um, look into having a joint use agreement on utilizing Fremont. Um, and what we would want is for the students to have access to the grass space, to the playground, um, during school hours, and then, um, for the community to have access to the rooftop, um, after school hours for residents in Artisia Pilar. And, um, Willard, the request that I would have for Willard is, we presently do have a dual-use agreement in place, but the residents, um, are not happy with the hours. The hours are very limited, and they're limited to when the, uh, school is being rented. So, um, we would want an agreement that also reflects the needs of the Willard community. Um, and with that being said, I think we have a pretty comprehensive and cohesive map of school sites that we want to address. I'll, I'll put a motion on the floor. If, if anyone, uh, has any additional comments, um, please let us know.
Any other comments?
Uh, I'm supportive of this. Uh, I just have a, a couple of questions for clarification. It, it's been a while since we met, and I know that in previous meetings, we talked about joint use agreements. We talked about the master, the master agreement. And then we also talked about possibly starting a pilot program in regards to the joint use of schools. And I just wanted to ask, maybe staff can give us an update on, did, did that ever, conversation ever happen between the district and the, and the city, and where do we end up with that?
So we do continue to meet with the school district. Um, like I said, they just went through a lot of changes and staffing, so we're getting, you know, used to them, and, you know, we're starting up this conversation again. But like I said, it is, it is ongoing, and we do meet with them every month. So again, hopefully we'll get there sooner than later, but we do start, and like I said, some of the schools you talked about, we have started a conversation.
I guess for me, I'd like a little, and I understand some of the, the, the staff changes, but I, I'd like to see a little bit more, um, commitment in terms of, or not commitment, I guess, just really focusing on a timeline here, um, because I think since I joined the Subcommittee, it's, we've been hearing the same thing, and I think from both sides, and so I think, um, I really want us to start really setting a timeline for ourselves. And great, we're having these meetings, but by when can the Subcommittee expect a, a, a report in terms of where the conversations are at and where they're going? Um, I think that the community has been waiting that, waiting on that for a really long time now. So if we can set a very clear timeline, and so my hope is that by the next, um, Subcommittee meeting, um, you all are able to meet and give us a more detailed timeline about when you expect, um, to, to, to have some kind of rapport or update on those ongoing conversations. And I will, I guess, add that to the, to the motion, if you accept.
Yes, please, we'll, we'll accept the, um, addition to the, to the motion. And, um, at this point, um, we have a motion on the floor. I don't believe we have.
Second, your motion?
Thank you. We have a motion in a second.
Um, Recording Secretary, can you please call roll?
Yes. Committee Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Committee Member Vasquez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
Yes.
Chair Bustos?
Yes.
It's four A's, your niece. Motion carries.
Thank you. With that, let's go ahead and move on to item number five, crossing guards for next school year. Who would like to begin that discussion? Okay, Vice Chair Hernandez?
Thank you, Chairperson Bustos. Um, this item is an important item to both of our agencies. Um, for one, you know, our residents are walking to their schools, and they're walking on public, city-owned property to get back to their, their residences. Um, it, it's a concern that many of us have here on the council in Santa Ana, because we have, uh, an alarming number of children and families who have been victims of, of, uh, you know, reckless driving, um, people who have been hit crossing the street. So it is, it is with an abundance of caution that we want to be proactive in protecting students. The city of San Ana, um, recently adopted a contract for crossing guards, but I think it's important for us to find a pathway forward on how we can ensure student and family safety. Um, presently, right now, the city council is, and has approved a budget, but we do have a shortfall coming in 2030. Um, so I, I, I think it's important that we have the next couple of years, as this contract will phase out, um, that we consider ways for us to collaborate on sharing these costs. I think ultimately, you know, the policy direction, um, from some of my colleagues in, in the Santa Ana City Council was that they felt this was a responsibility that the school board should pay. I disagree. I think that this is a responsibility that we can share. Ultimately, we are going to do everything that we can in the city of Santa Ana to ensure children are protected, that they have safe routes to school. Um, our Public Works Director has done a great job getting grants so that we can address pedestrian safety. But as we're looking at the shortfall coming in the next couple of years, I think it gives us an opportunity to have dialogue as two agencies to find a pathway forward that's equitable for both of us, um, that shares a common, um, goal and a vision of protecting students and families.
their way to, to and from school. And, and not understanding the full budget or outlook of the Santa Ana Unified School District really is not a way for us to go forward as the school district is losing 1,500 students a year and projected to go on to 2030?
Approximately 1,000.
1,000 a year. So, so that's going to mean, that's going to mean loss of funds and they do, there is quite amount of reserves that they saved from special grants to use on decreasing the amount of, of classroom sizes and to have more counselors per, per children. So they, they use that money in a long time. There is reserves that they do have that we, that we're looking at as a city and, and people who have been on the school board should know better because they understood the plan from the get-go. The people on the school board understand the plan. And they will be not having the same budget come 2030 as well. So we really have to look deep. 1,000 students equals to two elementary schools a year, half a high school, right? So, so we really have to not see that as a reserve, that's something that we could get a grasp on because that's not long-term. So I'm hoping the city will continue to pay, full pay their, their, the full part of crossing guards. And I know, Nabil, we did a good job of rearranging and making sure that our kids were safe this year, even though we did cut crossing guards. Can you tell us more about how you managed to, to pull this off for us?
Thank you, council member. Good evening, Nabil Sabah, the director for the Public Works Agency for the city of Santa Ana. Thank you for bringing this subject up, council member. We cut about eight locations this last year to be able to perform and deliver the crossing guard program for the city. Budget-wise, we are about $400,000 in the negative to be able to deliver a fully functional crossing guard program. As you may remember, we came to council a few months ago, maybe a year ago now, and we proposed a volunteer, a program for crossing guard. That has not materialized for many reasons, training, commitment from both the city and the school district and providing crossing guard, volunteer crossing guard has not materialized. It's a lot of work and also our police department was reluctant to provide the training. So we're looking at other outside agencies to train our volunteers or the potential volunteers. And that has not materialized. That training costs a lot of money, which kind of put this volunteer crossing guard program to the side. And now we are functioning with a, a program that is basically on crutches, underfunded.
How, how much of the budget did we cut this year? Did we cut any at all or?
We did not cut. This year's budget is base budget, which means what we had last year will carry through for next year.
The, the problem with our plan this year is that we said we're going to cut it, but we, and we're eventually going to cut more, but we expanded where we're going to serve. So in some illogical way, we decided we're going to cut down services, but we're going to expand services to Garden Grove and I'm not, I'm, I think we should serve the kids that go to Garden Grove and I think we should serve the kids that go to private schools and I think we should serve the kids that go to other areas around and charter schools. Those are our students, those are our families. But to say, we're going to now give you service and in the future, we're going to cut it. I don't understand, I just don't understand that logic. I know it didn't come from you, it came from the DICE. I know it wasn't the staff. So I hope we can somehow the city find to take its responsibility of, of the roadway, of the sidewalks, of the safety of our residents and especially our children. Thank, thank you, Nabil. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Subcommittee member Vasquez?
Yes, I had a couple of comments. I just wanted to mention, we, we've spoken about this issue in the past and one of the things that I remember is from the very first discussions that we had, the superintendent stated that there's other ways that we can help. The superintendent stated, we, because our funding sources, because the funding buckets that we have, we have non-discretionary funding, which has to be spent in particular areas. Because of that, we might not be able to help with this, but there are other ways that we can help. And the thing that I was thinking, that just came to mind is, so for example, the after school programs and the summer programs, the funding that, that we were getting was extended, extended learning opportunities grants. And our budget for after school and summer programs is larger than the budget for Parks and Recs. And the, the, but the, the problem here is that we're, we're competing for the same kids because according to the criteria for expanded learning opportunities funding, it states that we have to service every child that wants after school activities. We have to provide them with, with league sports, we have to provide them with touring, we've got to provide with, with all, all these things. So, and that's one of the reasons why I keep talking about Parks and Recs, because I think that there is an opportunity for us to utilize some of the funding that we have to offset some of the costs that, that we have on this side. The other thing that I wanted to mention also is that, that, that the city of San Ana, they put together the safe, safe routes to school plan, adopted in 2020. And in the safe routes to school plan, it delineates what the city's going to do and then also what the school district is going to do. And, and I think maybe we should go back and take a look at that master plan so that we can implement it more effectively. So for example, on the school district side, it talks about parent education, parent education and driver safety and all, all of these other things. And reflecting back on, on the years, I don't think that we've never, maybe it did happen behind the scenes, but I don't think that we worked together in regards to, to the implementation of that plan. And my, my biggest concern is, we've talked about this publicly several times, we've done a roadshow in regards to our budget, in regards to our budget because of declining enrollment, we're facing a structural deficit in approximately three years. So if we don't do anything within our school district, we're going to be broke in three years. And, and the, the thing is, we need to think about long-term, what can we do to stay afloat, to prevent us from drowning? And I just wanted to turn it over to superintendent if you had any other comments.
Yeah, just to, you know, just reiterate what, what has been said already. I'm confident that given the opportunity for the district staff to sit down with the city staff, I think there are many opportunities that we could put our heads together to not compete for resources, but to help each other. And I think because of the transitions in the district and at the city level, it's been a challenge to do that. And I really think that if we were given a, a, a meeting calendar or a timeline, like Mr. Bustos says, and allowed our staffs the, the ability to interact and meet and then bring ideas back, that would be very helpful. Sometimes we drop the ball and certain staffs aren't able to make it, but, you know, and it goes both ways. But I think if we could establish a meeting calendar, I am confident that the, the goals and the priorities of the city staff are the same as the district staff. And it, I think the challenges and the frustration that I get is when we, we talk independently, but when the bodies come together, it, there are different outcomes. And so a lot of times we agree and then it, it gets changed in different areas. But if, the more we're meeting, the more we're sharing what our priorities are and what our goals are and how our money is being spent, I think, and get a better understanding of how the city's money is being spent, I think we could do some pretty amazing things.
Thank you, superintendent. Yeah, I think that's really important and I think that's something that, you know, as a chair, I really want to stress and, and really making sure that our district and city staff are meeting and are reporting back to this body to talk about the progress of, of your meetings. For me, it's important to learn more about the, the contract and the plan that was approved by the city council regarding this crossing guard situation. I know that Dr. Alvarez also mentioned the safe route to schools plan. I know, Mr. Sabah, you also mentioned the, the volunteer, the pilot program, and I know that there were some concerns around costs or some commitment concerns as well. And so for me, I'm hoping that this body can hear more in-depth details and discussion or details about these three items, a safe route to schools plan, the approved contract and plan that was made by the city council regarding crossing guards, and also some of the concerns, opportunities, challenges regarding the volunteer crossing guard program. And I'm hoping that we can bring that back during our next committee meeting. Does that sound like something that can, can be done by the next committee meeting?
If I may interject just one thing. So I think the, the challenge that we have is the agenda changes periodically with different items of priority. And I think it would be, it would benefit the city and the district if like we were to stick to these three and then every time we come back, we can give you an update on these three. Because you know how it is, I mean, we're, we're trying to please the, the board and committee. But I think if we know what the focus is, if the, if this committee has priorities or goals, that we all understand what those goals are and then what that looks like. So you're talking about the music in the park or the joint entertainment or music and then the joint use, those are very simple things that we could spend a lot of time talking about, focusing on. And then same with the crossing guards.
Absolutely. You read my mind. I was, I was going to get to that during the board comments in terms of, you know, kind of like our, our role here in this committee and, and how we should be prioritizing items. And so thank you for making that comment, superintendent.
May I add just a clarification on the safe route to school? The safe route to school plan was developed by the city in conjunction with the school district in evaluating the path of students getting to schools physically. And we have developed a really robust plan that we have adopted and thank you for the help of the school district. It's an awesome plan. As, as a result of the plan, we were able to secure $57 million worth of improvement for, as you can see, next to the district office, we're doing sidewalk improvements and tackling all these issues that relates to the safe route to school. However, the safe route to school plan is not a, an ongoing management plan, it is a structural plan that deals with infrastructure improvements to make these intersections sidewalk safe for students to get to school and go home and vice versa. But it does not fund a, for example, the crossing guard. We tried, it doesn't, that is not a fundable and it's not a, it's something that the safe route to school, a plan can fund. And that's the issue that we had.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other comments from the subcommittee members?
Yes, Chairperson Bustos, I'll make a motion for the district and city staff to meet and to work collaboratively on creating a calendar and an action plan as to how we can address our concern, our collective concern for crossing guards.
Is there a second? Thank you. Hearing a first and second. Madam Secretary, can you please conduct a roll call?
Committee member Alvarez?
Yes.
Committee member Vasquez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
Yes.
Chair Bustos?
Yes.
Okay, the vote is four A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And thank you all so much for, for the discussion. Let's go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, which is subcommittee member reports. Subcommittee member Alvarez?
At this time, thank you.
Thank you. Subcommittee member Vasquez?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Vice Chair Hernandez?
Thank you, Chairperson Bustos. Just want to thank our staff and, and our school district staff for being here today.
Thank you. First of all, I want to, I want to begin by thanking all of our, our city and district staff for your hard work. I know that this, this body here is really excited and wants to get things off the ground and wants to get things moving, but we know that and understand that it takes time. But again, you know, personally, I've been hearing a lot from members of our community that have had concerns and have brought up questions to me about the progress that we're making on the subcommittee. And I'm very confident in the work and the dedication of the subcommittee members up here. And so I'm excited that as chairperson, I can help lead this work alongside these amazing subcommittee members to really bring forward items that are going to improve the lives of our youth and our families here in the city. I do want to make comment to our subcommittee members just around, you know, bringing forward items and really being able to see the item all the way through and follow through. I want this subcommittee to be a place of action. So more than, more so than just a place where we have conversations and we throw out ideas, I really want us to work towards really setting goals for ourselves and what we want to develop. And so perhaps that's something where we, for the next meeting, where we can really ground ourselves and like, what are the goals that we want to establish for this subcommittee? I don't know if that we've done that in the past, at least we haven't since I joined the subcommittee here. And so I, I'm hoping that we can have that discussion at the next meeting. I also want to invite, or actually, I also, you know, for our, for our district staff and for our city staff, and, and making sure that there is some follow-through with, you know, any motions or actions that's taken by this body. I know that at the last subcommittee meeting, we had shared that we wanted to have a specific date where city staff would present on city resources, including information on housing, rent control information, worksite center services and youth-related services to our SAUSD face liaisons. And so I don't know if city staff and, and the district got together to discuss when that meeting could be set for. And so I, I'm hoping that if that hasn't been scheduled, that we can have that ready to go and scheduled and that, and that date can be shared with the subcommittee members up here.
And if we could do it hopefully in August, when the face liaisons are getting training during the week before we start school, I think Lisa Solomon is on board to do that work.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, I want to invite everyone, all the subcommittee members up here, our staff, members of the community that are watching to the LGBTQ plus youth convening taking place on Saturday, May 18th at Segers from High School from 9 to 3 p.m. It's an opportunity for our community to come together and go through a series of workshops on how we can better support our LGBTQ plus youth here in Orange County. It's a great collaboration between the school district and between the LGBT Center of Orange County. There's going to be three different tracks, a track for students, a track for parents and families, and a track for educators and community members. And so I encourage everyone to attend this convening, this conference again on Saturday, May 18th from 9 to 3 at Segers from High School. With that being said, I hereby adjourn the meeting. The next joint school collaboration subcommittee meeting is scheduled for May 6, 2024, in the council chambers at 6 p.m. Thank you.